I'd like to call to order the council meeting for February 2nd, 2016. And if we could, please stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Please be seated.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, may I have your call, please?
Marla Milner. Olivia Brady. Valerie Scott Cooper. Heather Lewis. Hakeem Jones. Derrick Perry. Sonya Sanders.
Here.
Council members, the presentations line item was left off of the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to open the agenda to include the presentations because we have our presentation from UAO Consulting. Can I get a motion?
(inaudible).
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it and that motion passes. The next order of business is the motion to approve Resolution 16-106, Appending Officer Matthew O'Connell to the rank of Police Corporal. Can I get a motion? Madam Secretary, may I have your call, please?
Marla Milner. Olivia Brady. Valerie Scott Cooper. Heather Lewis. Hakeem Jones. Derrick Perry. Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
Next order of business is the oath of office. Matthew O'Connell, please repeat after me. I, Matthew O'Connell.
I, Matthew O'Connell.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
And the United States of the United States of America.
The Constitution of.
The Constitution of.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Charter of the Municipality.
The Charter of the Municipality.
Of Norristown.
Of Norristown.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of Pennsylvania.
Of Pennsylvania.
And the Municipality of Norristown.
And the Municipality of Norristown.
I will discharge the duties.
I will discharge the duties.
Of my office as a police officer.
As my duties of a police officer.
For the Municipality of Norristown.
For the Municipality of Norristown.
Police Department with honor.
Police Department with honor.
And fidelity.
And fidelity.
I will uphold.
I will uphold.
Obey.
Obey.
And enforce the laws.
And enforce the laws.
Of Pennsylvania.
Of Pennsylvania.
And the Municipality of Norristown.
And the Municipality of Norristown.
Without consideration.
Without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Thank you. The next order of business is the motion to approve the minutes of the council workshop meeting held on January 19th, 2016. Can I get a motion from a council member, please?
(inaudible) council workshop meeting. No further questions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none, those meeting minutes passes. Tonight, we had executive session pertaining to litigation. Tonight, we will have a presentation from Stephen Corey Partner at UAO Consulting. Vice President, Councilman Perry, do we have any announcements?
Yes. Friday, February 12th, 2016, the Center Theatre at 208 DeKalb Street will have an African-American education program that is from noon to 9:00 PM. And on Saturday, February 13th, 2016, the Vance Center at 212 Cherry Street will also have the African-American education program from noon to 9:00 PM. Saturday, February 13th, also at 11:00 AM at the Montgomery County Norristown Library, ragtime romp. Students from St. Cecilia Conservatory will play selective works by Scott Joplin, the King of Ragtime. There is going to also be a men's breakfast. The guest speaker will be Pastor Craig. It's called "Ouch, What Every Man Needs to Know About Pain." That will be at Macedonia Baptist Church. If you want to RSVP, you can call 484-557-2515.
Does that conclude the announcements? Thank you, Vice President. Could I please have Stephen Corey come up from UAO Consulting?
So, I'm Stephen Quasi with UAO Consulting, and I'm here to present briefly who we are, who we are, what we do, and what we can do to help you in terms of the snow plowing issues. So, who we are, we are a consulting company based here in Philadelphia, and what we do is we leverage partnerships to try and provide our clients with solutions to whatever their issues may be. And what we provide is a consulting service that includes either advisory on how to leverage technology to achieve the objectives set forth by our clients. We can also engage in the implementation of these solutions. So, with regards to that, because when it comes to the whole snow management space, I mean, this is something that's already been done by a number of government agencies out there right now. So, you're not so much reinvent the wheel, but actually taking what already exists and trying to tailor it to meet what your objectives and your goals are in terms of what you want this to provide to your municipality. That being said, you have a range of different options. You can go with the, you know, you have your Rolls-Royce options, and then you have your not, your Cadillac options, and you have something far below that. But then all comes down to what it is that you need. What is the goal that you're trying to achieve? And we can help you leverage technologies to do that. I mean, that's, I don't know if there are any specific questions in terms of what it is that your goals are and your objectives are, but I could take that and provide responses in that fashion.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Jones, could we please get an update on the winter storm response improvements?
Thank you, Madam President. We'd be happy to do it. As a preference to my update, I will say I know that right after this, we have public comments, and I'm sure there's going to be lots of public comment about this. One of the things that we also want to make sure of is for anyone who might feel that uncomfortable speaking publicly, we do have three boards and some post-it notes and pens at the back because we definitely would like to ensure that we get all comments, all concerns, any ideas that folks have, and also as a part of the process, ultimately, that the council is going to lead us through, we will be doing some public involvement as we come to the long-term, really, all-hazard solution that we have to come to in really resolving the issue of emergency routes relating to snow plowing and any other type of hazard that would require a clearing of roads. So, we encourage folks who are interested, who may not be interested in talking, but who are interested in sharing their ideas, their concerns, and who actually would be interested in participating in a focus group to discuss that with staff and council, to just sign a sticky note, leave your contact information, and we'll be happy to get back to you to discuss it. So, getting to the objectives update as a result of discussions and the input we've had from council and the community, there were some things I shared with council at the last meeting that were really some short-term objectives that we're going to undertake to make some, I guess, some long-needed changes in terms of how the Public Works Department operates. And so, I wanted to go over short-term and long-term and where we are as far as the status at this point. The first of them was, in terms of short-term objectives, was to establish formal annual contracts with private contractors to support the public works staff in plowing, removing snow, and all other essential procedures, which we believe should include brining as a part of the process. We started those discussions, we, the public works staff, myself, and the finance director have been doing research and have reached out. We had already secured some contractors in the immediate term, but we're looking now to establish some short-term agreements. Right now, those discussions are underway with some firms to support us in any plowing and snow removal efforts as we go forward this current season with the goal of actually establishing long-term contracts for support. So, we're going to be looking for contractors to support the operation, and we'll be coming to council with proposals for annual contracts for support. So, that process is underway. The second item was more frequent social media and storm preparation response updates before, during, and after a storm event so that we can better inform and assist the community, both in preparing for the storm, understanding what to expect from the municipality in the event of the storm, and how residents and businesses can best help themselves, each other, and the municipality in effectively and efficiently getting through the storm. We have actually been working on that as well. The team met on Monday morning. It's a multi-departmental team that basically all departments are included in the operations, certainly led by our Public Information Office and our Emergency Management Coordinator, Chief O'Donnell. So, we have begun the development of messaging that'll be standard messaging that'll go out. We'll start it last week before and continue it all week, and then we'll be doing routine updates on the various social media, website, television outlets, and certainly newspaper outlets regarding preparedness, how we're doing, and what's going on afterwards, and what expectations we have of residents and what residents should have as far as expectations of us. That's why it's important to us that we also get those ideas, comments, concerns from residents so we can ultimately, in terms of the longer-range plans, incorporate that information. The third thing was to ensure certainly that the next Public Works Director possesses the knowledge and expertise to address issues, particularly including winter storm management issues that are unique to our urban environment and to, you know, a northeastern urban environment. That process had already begun. It is a regional search primarily focused in the north, in the northeast region as far as candidates, but certainly because it is national, anybody can apply. But that criteria is going to be critical in terms of who that next person is and understanding how to do snow and snow removal in this type of an environment. So, that process is underway. We're right now at the point where the last update I got, which was on Friday from the recruiter, was that there were 21 candidates thus far. They're going through the vetting process, and the goal, as council knows from briefing, is our goal is to have candidates before council in the month of February, maybe through early March, but certainly with council having made a confirmation of a candidate by the end of March. But that process is active and underway. Next item was purchasing essential non-capital equipment, and that's capital, that's equipment that we should have in the public works operation and other operations to support us that is less than $5,000 in cost, things like chains, et cetera, that is essential, that are essential tools for staff to use. A good bit of that equipment has been purchased, and there's some equipment that's still being purchased. We are identifying, both in collaboration with our staff through some benchmarking of other departments in the region as well, identifying those essential pieces and tools that are best practices and next practices in terms of having efficient storm center response operation. The next item is the development of documented standard operating procedures for storm management. And I definitely want to clarify, in terms of the plan on the website, you know, while it's there, it is certainly not as detailed as a plan should be in terms of addressing operational activities of the department. And one of those things we're doing now, again, is benchmarking several departments. We're taking, you know, not only from research that staff is doing, council members have provided some research. I know Councilmember Perry shared some plans from other council members in other communities that they share with him. So, we're looking at all of those and culling them for best practices that we can institute and set up, which would be a first in terms of the municipality and having the level of detail that we have, we plan to have in our plan. And that is under development, and we will be continuing reporting to council as we proceed in the process to let you know where we're going. Item number six was installation of GPS technology in our vehicles in the public work fleet to optimize the allocation of resources and also track the progress of response operations, both during storm and otherwise. Today, the supervisor fleet, myself and the finance director did sit down, and we have actually nailed down the technology we want to use. I've authorized that technology to be purchased, and we will be installing GPS equipment in all our public works vehicles within the next two weeks. So, it's a matter of just getting it ordered, getting it in, and getting it installed. And so, that will give us the capability to track where vehicles are, a whole range of reports that we'll be able to use in terms of monitoring the allocation of resources, not only just for storms, but for any operations, which is what we'll be happy to have in place when the next director arrives. Item seven was mandatory certification training for public works personnel in snow plowing and removal operations. One of the things that has always been important is that training be made available. I know through the LTAP program from PennDOT, snow plow training and every other type of training that is pertinent to public works has already been made available. It certainly now is mandatory and has been made mandatory. And one of the issues that we, well, one of the circumstances that we certainly will deal with is I know that there's some concern in terms of how many people are qualified or have been effectively trained to undertake snow plowing. Through the end of this process, everybody who touches a plow will be trained, retrained, and there'll be an annual training process that they go through, not only in this, but in other areas of public works, as in conjunction with the training program that's been instituted within our HR department. So, to be tracked, part of everybody's record, and also be a part of everybody's disciplinary record if the training is not obtained because it will be mandatory. Item eight is establishing and staffing a dedicated call center with public works for taking and tracking service requests. That process is underway. One of the ways we want to approach that is certainly, we are going to establish and working right now to establish a snow line for people to call directly to the department will be the line to call for any concerns, requests for service, et cetera. And we'll make it some easy to remember number that certainly we'll have posted in all of the necessary places, social media, et cetera. But not only that, that is a component of what's going to be a different type of war room for managing snow with boards and tracking and reporting, and it's going to be staff fully. So, when snow personnel, public works personnel will be called in for, you know, 24/7 snow operations, this call center will be 24/7 as well. And what we're talking about now and the codes manager I met and discussed this today is that we're going to be using code personnel to support that operation so that they will be on-duty personnel to support that 24 hours. And that'll give us some extra assistance in terms of identifying whatever issues we might find out in terms of violations of protocols that are going to be established for, again, for what citizen responsibilities are and for resident responsibilities versus municipal responsibility. So, that is underway. We expect to have that number within the next week or so done. So, we're excited about that. In terms of, oh, I'm sorry, and then the final item in the short term was expanded partnership and coordination with Montgomery County to facilitate more effective and efficient storm response downtown and around the county complex. We have already begun those discussions and are in the process now of having a meeting between their team and our team to talk about those things that they can do to support municipality and making sure certainly that properties around them are taken care of and that they can support us in some other plowing activities downtown, and as well as the utilization of their parking facilities. That's a discussion not only with the county, but we're actually looking to have that discussion with private sector folks and other entities strategically around town, whether it be churches, whether it be private entities or whatever that has lots or parking decks, to see if there's a way we can end into some type of agreement for shared parking for residents as we get into the process of developing a snow emergency route and also coordinating with neighborhoods to get cars off the street so that we can plow them and they can get cars back on the street. So, those are the short-term objectives and where we are with that. The longer-term objectives that we have, which are really six months and beyond, and a lot of that's going to depend on some legislation and discussions with council, and also a lot of citizen engagement and involvement as far as getting feedback and ultimately getting buy-in in a plan that's going to be pretty different from what the current situation is as far as expectations if they are going to be true snow emergency routes in the community. We started those discussions internally, and that's going to be part of the process that we go through, not only with the county, but in other entities as we develop this all-hazards approach to managing emergency services in the municipality. And one of the important components of that plan, as we do look forward ultimately to once council has adopted the components of the plan and put in the legislation to support the plan, will be routine evaluation of how it's going and making adjustments based on that evaluation that we get. And then the final long-term objective is looking at, looking to council to assist us as we look at what we need to do for capital equipment related to snow and emergency response, all-hazard response. I think council recalls that a few months ago, we presented you with a pretty substantial book. We showed you this book of documenting all, every road that we, and every segment of road, actually, that we have in town as a part of the five-year roads maintenance program and the ensuing bid that's about to come out for that first fall of priority, one roads. Well, we're doing the same thing, and we already had it underway, led by the finance director. We're doing the same thing with equipment, not only public works equipment, but all equipment, vehicles, et cetera, that we have because we need to share with council a real concise and detailed picture of what equipment we actually have in the municipality, in this instance specifically related to public works. I think, you know, anecdotally, I heard it certainly from throughout the community, and I've heard it certainly from some staff, that we need to do some right sizing as far as the equipment that we use based on the size of our roads, the topography of our roads, excuse me, and the capacity of the staff from a size standpoint to be optimally effective in terms of responding to a storm. So, we're going to, in your upcoming retreat, we're going to be sharing with you documents and information related to the capital plan that includes equipment and some strategies that we believe not only will allow us to purchase that equipment, but also allow the municipality to save a significant amount of money just by changing the way we do business from a purchasing and capital standpoint. So, we're going to present the first part of that plan at your retreat, and what we will be doing going forward is, and is currently underway, we're actually evaluating in collaboration with our engineers, plus looking at, again, benchpress, benchmarking best practices from with our engineers, plus looking at, again, benchmarking best practices from several communities around us in terms of types of equipment that we have versus types of equipment that best work in our environment so that we can bring you a plan for equipment replacement that makes sense and that is supportable and also that is coordinated with what we think is best for contracting out for support versus keeping in-house and actually buying equipment to do. So that's where we are. This process is ongoing and as I said, as we're going through and we tick off these items as completed, I'll be providing an update to the council so that you can share it accordingly.
Councilwoman Brady?
Thank you very much. I have one question specifically regarding item six, and that's the installation of the GPS technology. I know other municipalities have a way that residents can track where the plows are so that they can be prepared perhaps on the street. Is that something that you could possibly, that is possibly being looked in specifically in coordination with our Norristown app?
We absolutely are. As a matter of fact, we're going to be looking at how we can set that up, particularly during the storm events, so that you can have onsite tracking if you have a smartphone or a computer that you'll be able to see where we are plowing.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for that update. Next order of business is public comment. Mr. Solicitor, could you please provide the protocol for a public comment?
Sure. Council has passed a resolution setting up the ground rules of the protocol for public comment. Just a brief summary of those. We ask that when you come to the podium here, please identify yourself by name and where you live. And also too, keep in mindful that we have a lot of people here this evening. Everybody would like an opportunity to comment. We ask that you would hold that comment to three minutes. If you have multiple items, that can be up to five minutes, but three minutes per one item. And also too, there may be some repetitive comments after a while related to this. We ask that if your complaint or issue has been addressed by someone else, we ask that there will be staff available after this meeting. You're free to come talk to us at that time as well. So the point is that if something has been mentioned before or a point or suggestion that has been mentioned before at the council, we hear you and there's no necessity to necessarily make the same point over and over again. So.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Madam Secretary?
Bernard Gordon?
Yes, my name is Bernard Gordon. I live at 32 West Basin Street and I'm a PennDOT employee. So I'm here for myself, not for PennDOT. I have 34 years of experience of snow removal. My question to Mr. Crandall, do the guys work shifts? The employees, they run 16-hour shifts, 8-hour shifts?
So for all the residents, actually, your questions will not be answered tonight. So this forum is just a matter of what you need to say. And as Mr. Solicitor did state, staff will be available after the meeting.
Okay. My other question is that you do have some good ideas as far as salt brining. Salt brining is just going to buy you time, which is good. That's what we do. It buys you time. So hopefully you can get that technology into the borough.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have another public comment?
Yes, Al Johnson?
My name is Al Johnson. I'm a resident here in the borough. I don't even know if I want to ask these questions or not going to get answered. First and foremost, I just got a couple of things I wanted to touch on. Maybe not even dealing with the snow issue, but one issue is this restaurant we used to have on Johnson Highway, this Divas Kitchen. It seems to me and a few other people, like the borough basically just ran her out of business. There were supposed to be some funds allocated for her to set up shop somewhere down on Main and Sweet Street, but the building that she had on Johnson Highway is now occupied by somebody else. I mean, is this what the borough does? Do we run people out of business?
As Council President Sanders said, this is an opportunity for public comment.
That's what I'm doing.
Not necessarily a question and answer.
I'm making a comment. I have one directed to you as well, Sheriff Gilkeny. My second comment is as far as employment in the borough. I myself tried to get a job as a substitute crossing guard. And as I spoke to Lieutenant Todd Dillon, I don't understand why you have to have a driver's license to be a crossing guard. Maybe somewhere down the line, you guys can look at that and figure that out. The other issue that I have directed to the solicitor, are you not the sheriff of Montgomery Is that not a conflict of interest?
I'd be happy, I am the sheriff of Montgomery County. I'm not going to answer that. It speaks for itself and it is absolutely not a conflict of interest.
The last issue that I wanted to touch upon was there's been a lot of talk on the back burner about a proposed trip to Kenya, Africa by several members of council to woo a prospective coffee distributor here to Montgomery County, here to Norristown. It seems to me that that's a waste of taxpayers' money, my money. We have ample Wawa's, ample 7-Elevens, we have Just Java, we have coffee. How much coffee can one town drink? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Madam Secretary, any other comments?
Johnniele Derby? Am I saying it right? Looks like Johnniele Derby. Alexandra Egan?
My name is Alexandra Egan. I live on 507 West Marshall Street in Norristown. I have a little statement. It will take less than three minutes. Just a little remark before the statement, if I will start my work and be 10 minutes late, it's allowed seven, a chunk of money will be reduced from my pay. So we've been waiting a long time for you guys. The statement is regarding lack of preparation. All this what Mr. John said is supposed to be said six months ago. We all know by now, we all know by now what can happen when we are surprised by the winter season. Just to remind all that after winter, spring will come, then summer and fall. Each of those seasons can bring some emergency situations. Our Norristown is overpopulated, dirty, neglected, and negatively stigmatized. Our taxes are ridiculously high. The property values are dropping. This cannot be changed with a sweet talk or daydreaming plans like you guys are doing. Today, I am demanding from our council to review the qualification and job descriptions of those very handsomely paid positions. We need professionals in all departments. We need to see them in action. Let's face it, it's not an accident that nobody really likes to come to this room for those meetings. In a democracy, people have the right to speak and the right to get answers. With today's technology, there is no excuse for a lack of transparency between the government and the residents. Hopefully, hopefully, soon we will see some positive changes in our not easy existence in this town. Thank you.
I'd like to say good afternoon to the council. My name is Shirley Sampson. I live in the 400 block of East Spruce Street. I guess what I'm about to say, someone touched bases on it already, but I'm a little angry at the disaster that happened last week. We have a young lady across the street from us that's housebound and she can only get out when the ambulance come and get her. Last Monday night, I look out the window, I heard the ambulance coming up the street, but they got to the end of Spruce and they couldn't come down the street. About every three weeks, they have to come and get her and take her to the hospital. She has asthma, she's bedridden. They had to basically shovel their way to her house and it was just appalling. You can't go down the back alleyways because storm after storm, they have not filled in the holes that has been torn apart from winter by winter. So you can't even get down, they couldn't even get down the back alley. So that being said, I want to know, didn't anyone in Norristown, the head of council or anyone, didn't they hear about this storm a good two weeks ago? And to, I mean, I'm speaking on behalf of this young lady that has to, had to be hospitalized that night and they couldn't get down to her house. They got to shovel their way down. Then after the neighbors got out and we shoveled out, you still have people with all of these chairs and tables and stuff. You can't park. You know, I had to call out of work because you couldn't get out of the block. You have the next Walnut Street, these people had to literally pay someone to come shovel that street. And it's a disgrace. Everybody on that block work. They paying their taxes, I pay my taxes, you know? And I'm angry because I want to know what's happening, what kind of plan did you have in action? I'm seeing the trucks driving around the day, the guys with the hands over the back of the seats, not doing anything. I have not seen one bit of salt, nothing. They didn't put anything down. And here you got people need to go to the hospital and you can't get out the back way, you can't get out the front way because of the holes that's there and it's for emergency. All the small townships surrounding, they get taken care of, but Norristown seems, Norristown seems to be neglected. We need answers. Thank you.
Hi, Marie Fender. I live in Roberts, East Roberts Street, Norris Hills. I'd just like to say you did answer some of my questions about getting a public works person in place and that's got to be a good thing. My husband does dialysis three times a week and if it wasn't for this lady sitting here and three others of my neighbors in the 500 block of the alley last Monday, he wouldn't have gotten there and I don't even think the ambulance would have gotten there. And if he doesn't go, he lands in the hospital. I thank God for my neighbors, but I have to thank you that you do the right thing. And my last comment is, it was a disgrace. I'm sure you heard that before. And one last thing, this is the county seat of Montgomery County.
I'd also like to talk about the Kenya trip. I found online from your budget meeting on December 1st, 2015, where, Kendall, you asked for $20,000 for the trip. I want to know whose idea it was, why Kenya? Who's going? Is it you, Chenora and Jane? Is it just the three of you? That's all I know about so far. Is it just for the one business, the coffee import and distribution? Do they get a tax break? Can we get a breakdown of the $20,000 that is going to cost us taxpayers for you guys to go on this cruise? Did you do any marketing research? Knowing that 23% of startup businesses fail within the first year, did you do any surveys or polls? Do you have potential clients? Is there a market niche? Was any of this research done? I hope you don't have the know, the build it and they will come syndrome because that doesn't exist. The Norristown stake in the business, we have $20,000 going towards this business that you could help out locals with if you really wanted to. What's going to happen if they do go down? Are you going to send them back to Kenya? Are you going to give them a green card? Maybe citizenship? Are you going to oversee his business? Are you going to introduce them to the American way of life? Do you have a financial partnership with this guy? Is there a business, a planned location for him to work at? How big is the business? How many employees is he planning on having? And I guess you spoke with Governor Kambo of Kambo County, Kenya. I'm not sure how to spell that, but that's what you said on the meeting from December 1st. I just need some information about that because I'm furious and I know a lot of my neighbors are and maybe a lot of your employees are that don't want to come up here and talk about it. So I don't find you trustworthy and I need answers. All you need to do is Google your name. It's out there. Thank you.
Buck Jones?
Buck Jones, Norristown, 502 East Elm Street. First of all, y'all got me cracking up because this thing is a joke. Don't nobody want to get up here and say this, but this is a joke. Y'all say, don't take it to social media, talk to me, come to council meetings, you have a voice, and then you get up here and say, you're not going to answer no questions. When do we get a chance to publicly speak to our elected officials and get the answers that we want? We had the meeting the other day that was a meeting we was just supposed to come here and listen. So you say come Tuesday. Everybody comes out Tuesday and the first thing you get up here and do is say, shut up, don't say nothing again. This is really becoming really, really ridiculous. Now, Crandall, you're talking about this national search. We don't need a national search. What we need is a local, internal search. People that have been in the area for 20 years, a PennDOT search. We don't need somebody from California to come to Norristown and teach us how to plow snow. We don't need that. We need somebody with, you got all these degrees and everything. I read the resume application. Or equivalent experience, put that on there. Quit looking for all these degrees. I mean, BIPR slipped over. We're talking about a part-time crossing guard, need a driver's license? Are you kidding me? Come on, we're trying to put people to work here in Norristown. We worried about our Norristown people. Let's talk about emergency services. Has anybody thought about the Has anybody thought about the top way to contact majority of the households that I know of in Norristown right now? Norristown School District can make one button, and you get the phone call. This is the Norristown Area School District. Schools will be closed on this day. We heard it enough all weekend. Can we tap into a partnership with the school district so that in emergency circumstances, we can use their system? Or, you know, or figure a system out like there, something like that? Oh, my God, you guys cracking me up here today. Crandall, another thing, as of yet, you, because you were the person supposed to hire the person that we're looking for for a year, in that interim, you have been acting as the person over them for a year, you still have not accepted responsibility. You keep giving us reasons why it wasn't taken, but we talking about just accept responsibility. I blew it. I blew it, and we going to figure this thing out. All these other reasons you coming up with? Oh, that's, when do we ever get answers? And I'm just tripping on this other thing. The Africa thing, that's a question. And then, is the Africa the retreat? Or is there a retreat and Africa? I'm trying to be funny, I'm just serious. We going to get these answers at the retreat. That's what we know. We don't know what the retreat is, unless y'all do. But is the retreat Africa? Come on, let's get it together. We elected y'all to talk to us and to talk for us, representative. When one person can't go into a room, and you select a representative to go in there and represent their issues and their concerns for them, that's why you guys are up there, to represent for us, not to talk back to us or to tell us what's all going on. Represent the people of Norristown. That's what we asked you to do by electing.
So if I could reiterate the fact that we will be answering questions after the
Hello, I'm Laura Lawrence. I live on the 1800 block of Powell Street. One of the things, obviously, we're not getting answers for, I'm like Buck, I was here on Thursday, and I was told to come back on Tuesday, because when I spoke, you were going to answer my question. But one of the questions I presented to you guys, if you hear the word "state of emergency", what does that mean to you? If somebody says "state of emergency," your government gets on TV and said, "There's a state of emergency," what does that mean? That means that you obviously need to do something, and we didn't do a thing. And one of the things that Buck said, and I believe it too, we elected you guys, and could be easily unelected when the next term comes around. I'm a disappointed person. My parents live on Basin Street. It took you guys almost four days to get to two vehicles that were stuck down there. Four days. I complained, we called everybody, you guys had all kinds of excuses why you couldn't get to them. Most of those people live on the block were senior citizens that can't get out there and shovel. My father has a snow blow, he gave it to one of the young people to help them out, but it was a car, two cars, stuck in the middle of the street, and I kept calling. So one of those senior citizens, I don't know, may have been sick in their house, who would have got to them? I don't understand. I lived in Norristown, I lived, I lived on Powell Street for the last 15 years. This is the worst I've ever seen it. And again, the snow emergency thing, put it back into place. Powell Street used to be a snow emergency route. DeKalb Street used to be a snow emergency route. I watched people turn around and drive the wrong way on DeKalb Street. Go across the street to Plymouth Township or East Norton, their street was clean. How come they can do it right, but we can't do it right? Don't you have a conversation with your neighbors? Literally, Norristown surrounded by your neighbors, East Norton, West Norton, Jeffersonville, all of them. Why don't you have a conversation? What are you guys doing? Maybe they are a little bigger than us, maybe their budget is bigger, but still, they are there to help you. If you don't know what you're doing, it's called ask. If we put you in the position, ask. If you ain't got nobody that's doing the job and you're responsible for, ask for help. And again, I'm like, I'm disappointed that I listened to you on Thursday, you still haven't said you were sorry. You still haven't said you were sorry. You made a mistake. When I'm on my job and I make a mistake, I have to own up to it. It's called humble. Humble myself and say, "You know what? I made the mistake. What do I need to do to fix it?"
Ross Smith?
My name is Roslyn Smith, and I live at the 1300 block, I live in the 1300 block of Locust Street. And I'm here tonight to speak to you as a lifelong resident of Norristown and as a disabled American. I have lived in the borough of Norristown, grew up here, and bought a house on Locust Street, and I was told during the storms of '95 and '96 that the alleyways that surround my home do not get plowed. And I accepted that information, and when I was able to get out and plow those, or shovel those alleys to get my car out of the back, or was able to park in front of my house knowing that I wasn't going to have a plow come through my alley, I did that. But now that I have a ramp built on the back of my house that only allows me access to the rear of my home, and no longer can plow in the back, or shovel in the back of my home, I only have that one access in and out of my home. So I'm asking, as a lifelong resident of Norristown, and also as a disabled American, to be inclusive in the snow response. Having access that I may be able to leave my garage and access the alleyways, that I can go on and live and take care of myself and my family. I believe, as I was listening to Mr. Crandall speak today, that it's clear that he is a novice to the snow events here in Norristown, and maybe that's why the residents of Norristown are a little outraged, and rightly so. So I don't know what happened to the old system and why that was broken this time, but I'm hoping that the suggestions that were made tonight from Mr. Crandall would be a way of improving the old system and getting that to a point where this never, ever happens again. Like I said, I'm a lifelong resident of Norristown, and I, and I have never, ever seen Norristown in this condition, as I watched my grandfather, who worked for the borough of Norristown, get up and plow these streets during the middle of the night, and never in the history of my lifelong residency in Norristown, have I ever seen conditions like this. So I'm hoping that this never happens again, and I'm hoping, as a disabled American, that inclusion would be made available for persons like myself and others and the senior citizens.
The next order of business. Mr. Jones, if you could, go into the declaration of disaster emergency.
Madam President, as you know, every, it's pretty routine for us and most municipalities in the event of a, of an impending disaster, whether it be a storm or otherwise, that we declare a, an emergency, declare a disaster. We do that because that puts us in, in place to receive funding, should the governor declare a disaster, and funding be made available to reimburse communities for damages and personnel related to trying to address those issues. And so this disaster emergency document before you is, I declared the emergency, I can do so, I declared the emergency, so that put us in a place, and what we're asking tonight is that council will ratify that declaration. That will be the last piece of the puzzle that we have in terms of the application that we put in. Right now, the, the county is collecting, on behalf of all the municipalities in the county, the county is collecting applications and information. It's due in Friday of this week, at which time we will submit that information to the, we'll submit that information by Friday to the county, and the county will in turn submit that information to the, to the governor's office on behalf of Montgomery County, and it'll be later determined if there's going to be any allocation of funding to local and county governments as a result of the storm.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. May I get a member of council to make a motion to, to approve the declaration of disaster emergency due to the snowstorm of January 22nd of 2016? All in favor? Any nays? Hearing none, that motion passes. Next order of business is for the planning municipal development in regards to the FEMA flood plan regulations of the Norristown zoning ordinance. Mr. Jones, will you be discussing that, or will Ms. Sonnier?
That'll be Ms. Sonnier and the municipal engineer, I believe, is here.
Yes, he's in the audience. Thank you, President Sanders. If council recalls, at least some of the council members who are on board, we adopted the new zoning ordinance in 2014. That ordinance had the FEMA flood plane ordinance that is not current. So we've worked on that current, to bring it up to current requirements, as is required by FEMA, and we just received authorization from FEMA on January 19th that we can actually go ahead and adopt the new ordinance. We've had the opportunity to have our legal team review it, our county review it, and also the state. So we're asking council tonight to allow us to advertise that piece of the flood plane ordinance, so that we are in compliance. We're supposed to have a hearing on March 1st, so that we're able to submit that adopted ordinance to FEMA by March 2nd. I do have the municipal engineer in the audience, Ted, and he has the responses for any technical requirements, you, questions you may have. He may just give a brief outline of the process as well.
Yeah, my name's Ted Dmitrik with Penoni Associates. I'm filling in for Cal Hassan tonight. He's at a meeting. So right now, the municipality of Norristown is under the National Flood Insurance Program, and they are in good standing. FEMA will update their FEMA maps. The last time they did that was 1996. They're going to update them now for 2016. With those changes, if the, if the municipality of Norristown does not update their flood plane to meet the National Flood Insurance Program's requirements by March 2nd, they could be suspended from that program. So, as long as they get in by March 2nd, they'll, they'll be fine. So it would be, I would recommend that they get on to that, they adopt it by March 2nd.
Madam President, if I might add, and Jane, maybe y'all can speak to the issue, we actually submitted the necessary documentation to the state back in November, and, you know, the only holdup we've had is waiting for them to get a response back to us. I don't think they've gotten that response back to us yet, and so...
That is correct, yeah.
From all of the comments that we've gotten from the county and necessary parties, we're fine in terms of the ordinance. We just want to make sure that we get this done, because I think the consequence of not doing it also is going to be that we won't, people won't be able to get flood insurance in the municipality. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. And I just note that we've been participating in this program since 1982, but every time there are changes in this, in these laws, we have to make sure we've updated them. The reason why we're coming right now is because we got a letter from FEMA just about a week ago, it's a week and a half ago, basically saying, issues have been resolved with other counties, whatever appeals that were there. Now we're in the stage where they're saying, "Go ahead and adopt," but they've given us a deadline. They give us a month, so to speak, and that'll be March 2nd.
Yeah, so they had, their ordinance was ready two months ago. The, the county reviewed it, and they, they found everything adequate, then they submitted to the state. So we were still waiting on the state. We don't expect any comments back from the state until January of 2016. So, in the interim, we would like to get that, that ordinance, flood plane ordinance
Councilwoman Olivia Brady.
Thank you, Madam President. Are there any significant changes to our flood plane areas in the maps versus what we used to have, versus what is going to be updated with this? I'm assuming that since it's in the zoning ordinance, it outlines all of the potential flood planes in the municipality. And does this ordinance affect or impact potential development in these particular areas, either benefits or negatives, to any potential development there?
I'll say yes and against, and I'll let the engineer respond.
Yeah, I did compare the new flood plane maps to the existing right now. In general, though, there hasn't been any major changes. You will have some more encroachment of the flood plane in some areas and less encroachment, but overall, it's been the same or less. As far as the impact on businesses, they're, if they're located within a flood plane, they're going to have to get permitting to do any construction in the flood plane.
If I may just add to that, Councilwoman, they essentially, anyone in the flood plane will not be able to get the zoning permit if it has not been reviewed by the zoning officer, the engineer, planning commission, and even the code official. This is just to make sure that we are abiding by all the regulations that have been inserted in this new ordinance.
And you made a point about flood plane insurance, so that means that with this new ordinance, it enables people who, and businesses who are in those flood plane areas to make any necessary changes to their insurance. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Would a council member like to make a motion to approve, to authorize the public notice as required by the Pennsylvania Municipalities Code, MPD Act 247 of 1968, as reenacted and amended, of a public hearing on March 1st, 2016, to review and consider the adoption of proposed revisions to the Article 28 flood plan regulations of the Norristown zoning ordinance as required by FEMA? All in favor? Any nays? Hearing none, that motion passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next order of business is public safety, and Vice President, Mr. Perry will be covering
Excuse me, the resolution that I've proposed is to accept the change in how we hire police officers. Basically, before this change, a person who was a candidate for a police officer for the Norristown Police Department had to have what's called Act 120 certification, which is essentially the state's regulated training for police officers. So our process was that anybody who was going to be considered for a police officer position would already have the training, and the proposal here is to remove the requirement that you have to have the training before you become hired, before you're eligible, eligible to be hired by the Norristown Police Department. As you probably know, one of the issues that we struggle with in policing is diversity, that very often, police departments don't reflect the community very well, that we tend to hire the same types of people over and over again, and part of the reason why that's the case is our, our situations where, like this, where you'll have a training program that's relatively... you'll have a training program that's relatively expensive. If you pay your own way, it's about just under $5,000 or so. And one of the changes that's been made in other areas and other parts of the country that facilitates a more diverse police department and gives us an opportunity to look at a broader range of candidates is to remove this requirement. So that's what I'm proposing that we do. The downside, of course, would be that there would certainly be an additional cost, but in my opinion, it's well worth it considering the potential value that we would have from making the change.
Madam President, I have a question.
Councilwoman Cooper.
Yes, I just have a couple of questions in this regard to the Act 120. What guarantees are in place to ensure passing the exam?
As you know, Councilwoman, there wouldn't be any guarantees. Our background, the process that we go through to check the background of a candidate would let us know whether or not somebody would likely pass the test. You know, my experience is that a very small number of candidates actually don't make it through the program. It's, you know, not tremendously difficult, in my opinion. So truly, what we're looking at here is, are we doing a good job with our background examination? In our oral interview process, are we paying attention to making sure we're hiring a candidate that is a good fit for the Norristown Police Department? And frankly, I think it's worth the risk. If we hire somebody and they don't make it through, well, they lose their job and we need to look for somebody else.
Okay. Another question in that regard. Will there be any additional resources, if necessary, to help those applicants besides the schooling?
Help in terms of?
Making sure that they are being able to grasp whatever it is they need to in order to remain on the Norristown Police Department. In other words, you know, colleges and universities have extra resources, and I don't know if that's possible. But if it is, sometimes, you know, they may feel better coming to one of their own if they have a question instead of going to a resource at the academy.
So the police academy is sort of its own self-contained entity. There wouldn't, or I'll say traditionally, there wouldn't be any resources available to help somebody if they were having problems getting through and, you know, I think it's something to think about further. Because the standard for police candidates is not super high, you know, we're not talking about grad school, I think if you can't make it through without assistance, I'm not sure we want you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brady.
Thank you. In my previous experience in the Civil Service Commission, one of the discussions that we had in terms of ensuring that we have a diverse group of applicants that we went through was specifically regarding the interview questions. Does this motion talk to that? Specifically, I'm talking about the need for Spanish-speaking officers and that it was against civil service regulations, and maybe it's changed since I've been on the commission, that you cannot say to them as a measure of hiring, "Do you speak Spanish?" You can talk about various different situations in which a potential candidate has dealt with situations like that, but you cannot make it a requirement of hiring practices, to my knowledge. A, has that changed? And B, is this amendment going to address that particular aspect of it in any way? My concern is potential, you know, interview insensitivities that could come up during the process that could cause issues in applicants reviewing the process after they've either been accepted or denied for the job.
Councilwoman Brady, it has not changed. What this is doing is giving us a broader pool from which to draw from. So Chief Talbot, Norristown Police Department, can recruit Spanish speakers, can recruit other minorities that typically have not been represented in conjunction with the community, the Norristown Police Department, and urge them to apply for the Norristown Police Department. Meanwhile, in the past, before this had been the case, Act 120, which is expensive and takes a lot of time, is a barrier. So this gives essentially the Norristown Police Department, as the chief said, a recruiting tool for more diversity in the department.
If I may add also that I think it's a real issue in terms of, you know, is there some potential bias in the questions that we could ask during the interview process? And that's something I'm very mindful of, that I think it's important that I take a lot of control over what types of questions are asked, but I think the larger issue in Norristown, like every place else, is going to be, are the police attractive to minority candidates? And, you know, our strategy has to be consistent with that notion that it's important that we accurately reflect the community. And I think that this is another measure that allows us to go further in that direction.
Thank you, and I commend you for that. The one question was regarding the financial aspects. You did say that this was a somewhat of an impact from a financial aspect. Could you elaborate a little bit more on that point?
So if we continue to only hire candidates who already have Act 120 certification, then we would save the cost of sending somebody to the academy. And clearly, they would be available for the department, available for operations quicker. So that would be the downside.
Any other questions?
I would like a motion to approve Resolution 16-1, approving the amendment of the Civil Service Commission rules and regulations. Madam Secretary, can you take us to roll call, please?
I believe there was, was there a motion in a second?
It's not a motion. I make the motion. So moved.
No. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Marlon Milner, Olivia Brady, Valerie Scott Cooper, Heather Lewis, Hakeem Jones, Derek Perry, Sonya Sanders.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The motion is approved. The second, this is for Code. Can you take us through all of the HARBs? Mr. Simonson, please.
Thank you. January's meeting had 10 HARB certificates, 10 hearings with 10 HARB certificates issued. The first, I'll go down the list. The first one, I just want to make a correction, that is actually 510 West Lafayette Street and not 501. 510 West Lafayette received a certificate of appropriateness for replacing an existing slate roof with in-kind materials and also to install a pre-approved front door.
Go ahead.
You want me to just go right down?
Yeah, just go down the list.
All right. 829 Suede was to replace a roof in Cornus with matching products that were pre-approved. 232 Minor Street is replacing windows and doors with approved materials to match neighboring properties. An overhang of the roof shall be repaired to the specifications of the board. 120 West Erie Street was to replace windows and painting of a door and brick on the front facade to a pre-approved color. 262-264 East Main Street was to replace the existing stucco with a pre-approved system and to repair existing brick substrate. 530 Hawes Avenue was to replace 10 existing windows to the specifications of the hardboard. 667 Corson Street is to do some in-kind repair work of woodwork, install iron railings, paint existing stucco and the brick at the front of the house to a pre-approved color. 520 Hawes Avenue was to repair existing slate roof and denying the installation of a shingle roof. 1012 West Marshall Street, not allowing windows to be replaced, but allowing them to be painted to the specifications and replacing floorboards with in-kind material as needed. And 604 Noble Street was to replace three existing windows.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a motion to approve the 10 HARB certificates of appropriateness as follows. 510 West Lafayette Street, 829 Suede Street, 232 Minor Street, 120 West Erie Street, 262-264 East Main Street, 530 Hawes Avenue, 667 Corson Street, 520 Hawes Avenue, 1012 West Marshall Street, and 604 Noble Street.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Just wanted to correct for the record, it was 501 West Lafayette Street.
No.
Oh, you corrected, okay.
It was 510.
Okay, great. Yep.
Mr. Simonson said 510.
Understood.
Yes, I'm looking for a motion. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? That passes, that motion passes.
Before we adjourn tonight's meeting, I would just like to address the residents of Norristown. I heard your frustration, and I too am a resident of Norristown, so I too am disappointed. And I apologize for any inconvenience that this may have caused. The municipality is a work in progress. We have heard your voices and we have heard your concerns. And based off of all of that, we are coming up with a work plan, and we promise to give you updates as we progress. Will a member of council like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.